Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for making it here the day before the holiday. It's now seven oh four. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Armada Planning Commission to order. And if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Do you have the roll call, Chris?
Abercrombie here. Arnold.
Here.
Finn.
Here.
Jabaro.
Here.
Carrot.
Here.
Putchy.
Here.
Murray is not. And we have Laura with us tonight. Hi, Laura. How did you name it?
Next is the approval of the agenda. If there are no amendments.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
And Maureen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The agenda is approved as presented. Next is the approval of the minutes from our last regular meeting, which was June 5th. Does anyone have any corrections to those minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the June 5th meeting as presented.
I'll second it.
That was showing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, Chris and Laura and Joe and myself met to go through the master plan for a little workshop to get to this final draft that we're gonna be looking at tonight. And so what you have is a brief set of minutes. I think we were there, what, about an hour and a half or something like that?
From nine to eleven thirty, two and a half.
Pardon?
Nine to eleven thirty, it was two and a half.
Oh, two and a half. Time went so fast.
It's so fast.
So there is a, there is a copy of the comments of that.
And Beth, Beth was here as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. It says so right here. Thanks, everybody.
Pretty sure I was there, maybe another one.
Yeah, maybe we snuck out on there, so.
We need a motion.
This is kind of tricky. These are minutes from a workshop.
But we didn't have a quorum.
You didn't have a quorum.
So it's not really minutes.
It does say minutes at the top, but are these technically minutes?
No, just for filing.
Notes.
What do you think?
Summary.
How hard if I make a, a motion to have the notes from the workshop?
Documented.
Documented.
So we just put, make these into notes?
Or minutes? Does it need to be minutes?
I would probably keep it minutes just because it was advertised as a public meeting.
Okay.
Alright, well, I'll make a motion then to approve the planning, to approve master plan workshop minutes from June 12th as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Joe, Joe, okay. Now, you can vote on these minutes, even though you weren't there?
Okay.
That's just.
That's why.
Right, that's either, you don't have to rephrase. We just, you know, the, the video, it was online, so, you know, it'd be easy to, to, you know, corroborate this, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Minutes from both the workshop and the regular meeting are approved. I don't have any public online. I don't see any public comments out there, so I will move on to reports and correspondence, which is our update on our projects. Okay, so the first one is Blake's traffic study. We have a meeting scheduled with Macomb County Executive Office, the Macomb Department of Roads and Blake's on six twenty eight.
So it did take place.
Okay.
I'm waiting for the minutes of that meeting from the executive's office. It, it was very positive meeting, but since John has not approved anything, I'm not going to share a whole lot of what came out of it, but it was very, very positive and forward-thinking and.
So we can look forward to something happening?
Yes.
Okay.
Something.
Good to hear. Okay, nothing new with Trillium Farm. I know they've got some issues with the road commissioner they're gonna be working through. Nothing new with Hoopoe's Boneyard, so I'm assuming that's still in with the courts.
Correct.
Hidden River Estates. Now, the site plan, we extended that for a year to June of twenty five, twenty twenty five. The master deed approved by the township attorney contingent on final engineering and planner confirmations.
And I got the planner confirmation yesterday. The engineering sent a letter for revision of the exhibit. So the, the master deed is not yet finalized, but I do have approved engineering plans.
So we're getting close.
Getting close.
Okay. Nothing new with Latham Development on Powell, Dahut Storage. Not that they, they still have the building permits pulled, but nothing, no action yet?
Correct. They're, they're anticipating this within the next couple of weeks, so.
Okay. Miller Farm, the commission recommended approval and the township board approved special land use for indoor events and outdoor events at the June 12th meeting. Manufacture food and beverage and year-round kitchen special land use reviews were postponed for future review. So the board also took our recommendation and they did approve the special land use contingent on a full site plan approval, which they have not done yet, so that's still okay. So it's almost there, but we're still waiting on the site plan to be reviewed here. And that's ordinance book. We have some first draft at some of the agribusiness that we'll be just glancing at and a little discussion, but we're not really gonna dive into it, no decisions. So that, any other reports or correspondence?
Just the, the MTA workshop.
Thank you, Chris. So that is coming up in August. Can choose Frankenworth, Lawrence, or Cadillac, and it's the hot topics in planning and zoning. It's a, it's usually pretty good. They're good refreshers and what's, what's, what's new. And then also there is a book that, you have a copy?
Yeah, I put a copy for everyone. We, we have the two books that they're offering here available if you just want to review them. If you would like your own copy, the township will purchase them for you.
Will the township send us to this?
Yeah, they, they would.
Yeah, we have budget, budget for.
If you wanna do attend, attend one of these.
Is that a Saturday? No.
Don't know.
August fourteenth.
Fourteenth is a Saturday.
Get a chicken dinner. That's pretty good.
Township company chicken dinner?
I think it's included. It was pretty good last.
Oh, it's included?
August fourteenth is a Wednesday.
Oh, it's a Wednesday. Well, that's better for me, actually.
But we do have, there is money budgeted for education, so if you are interested in making this, like Chris Knowles, she can get you signed up and.
It's from five to eight?
Yeah, right during chicken dinner time.
Chicken time, so they feel that's nice.
But they want you there by four. To get registered and whatnot.
Okay, any, any other reports or correspondence? Nope.
Yeah. Receiving file reports and correspondence is.
Thank you, Beth. Receiving file reports and correspondence. Any second?
I'll second that.
Steve? All in favor of a motion to re, to file, receive and file reports and correspondence, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Which brings us to unfinished business, the Armada Township Master Plan. I think when I heard November, we've been working on this since November of twenty two. So here we are. Thank you, Beth and Joe. Like I said, we did meet for two and a half hours. And tried to get all the kinks out, so this should be the final draft, which will be adopted by resolution. In effect, I will just let Laura, our professional, explain where we're at and where we go from here.
Thanks. I think it's important to, to note the planning commission's involvement on this project since, as Chris reminded me, November of twenty twenty two. So this has been an eighteen-month project and even commissioners that are no longer serving on this board have contributed to the result that is before you today. I think Armada Township did a great job of offering opportunities to have the public be involved. So this was a longer process, but that means that there were multiple public meetings where this content was discussed. The commission engaged the village of Armada, which is an important stakeholder, and had public meetings with them as well, which is kind of, it, it's not unique, but it's not common practice, even though it probably should be. Municipalities don't always talk to their neighbors or those that they share their borders with. The survey that the township offered to the public, you extended the timeline on that to try to garner more responses and input. So that was another moment where you offered some additional time into the process to make sure that the public felt like they were able to contribute. And now, as we have the final draft, the public hearing was held last month. So that means that tonight you could adopt this by resolution. If there's any changes, you could note that in your motion to adopt. The township board will need to adopt this also by resolution at a future meeting date. They have a separate resolution that they would be adopting. And I think there was a question about the existing land use map, which is on page eighteen. And that has to do with Miller Farms and the pending application. I think what, if, if you felt this was appropriate, since, since they do have their special land use, but not their site plan, a compromise would be to do like an asterisk or a footnote on the map itself. And in the legend, note that as of July third of planning commission adoption, the site plan application was pending. So that it's clear in the record, and someone could go look at those minutes.
Well, let me ask you this. That's why I brought it up to DJ. On that for eighteen, what if he, what if he bows out, or should I wait on the question?
No, I think, I think it's fine to talk about it now. If he, if he bows out, then your footnote would still.
Would reflect it?
Yeah, it was, it would still, it would still apply. It was still pending as, when you adopted this.
Okay.
So we would just have a footnote that this is pending? It would just be shown a different way, or an asterisk?
Yeah, on the map and then reflected in the legend that would say, you know, as of July third, twenty twenty four, site plan application approval pending.
Okay, so that would just be a little footnote down here.
You know, would we say Miller Farm, or would we say just the address, or just the asterisk and follow the asterisk to the person?
I think the parcel's pretty well called out there. You think it'd just be a footnote, an asterisk?
I don't, I, I don't know. I, I'm lost here because I thought it was already approved and it was rezoned for the SAA, and this was just for a special land use of what he wanted to do.
It was rezoned into the SSA.
It was.
SSA.
So it's, it should be.
It's just the special land uses that have been built with that and out of.
Oh, I thought I was losing my mind.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't need to do anything.
You are correct.
Well, if he, and that's, that's my point back to the issue, is if he chooses not to do it.
He already has.
He already has it.
You've already approved his rezoning.
Contingent upon.
No.
No, those are the special land uses.
I thought we, okay. That's why I'm asking.
So it is correct.
Unless he, he chooses to go back and get rezoned again.
No, yeah, yeah, that's.
Hundred percent right. He did get the rezoning.
Yeah.
He is rezoned, he just doesn't have the spe, any of the special land uses contingent on his site plan, so. So the map is correct.
Then I would leave it as is.
No asterisk.
No asterisk neither, no. Okay.
And if he doesn't, I know this is redundant, and if he doesn't meet the requirement, it still stays with the property, you're saying?
If he's rezoned, the overlay, yes.
Alright.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter who owns it, right? Okay.
They'd have to file, pick up where he left off and continue to go through that process.
If they so choose, or they can have it rezoned again, isn't that?
I'll have to check again because I don't remember it was, but that's fine.
It was, it was separate. The rezoning was separate. It was done, that's why I didn't see it. I went back. It was a couple months ahead of it. I only went back a month to see the, so it was. So that is, okay, so that is correct.
Alright.
Did you have more, Laura, that you were?
No, I think you've gone through this plan a number of times and hopefully the updated goals and objectives and action plan will, you know, be a good guide for you to follow in the next couple of years.
And nor, normal is to, if nothing happens in the next five years, at a five-year point, would you review it?
Can confirm that the, the goals and objectives are still accurate and the action plan is still applicable, and you're working on it.
Sorry, may I?
Go ahead, Joe.
Laura and I apologize for the eleventh hour here. On the first draft, page three at the top, the hundred and twenty-five, the rear setbacks, the rear yard minimum of, that's on.
What page are you on, Joe?
That's, that's not what we're doing now.
Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. My, my mistake.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, yeah, I believe like, gotta have. I went to the wrong. I got sunstroke.
I think.
Jumping ahead here.
Overall, I mean, it's a very, very nice, the format's.
It's great.
Nice and readable. We, I think everybody did a great job getting pictures and, and input. And now we've got the zoning plan and I think everything that's required of the master plan, a little more, so. The trick, the trick is implementing the plan and making sure that we use it to see that our goals and objectives are, are met.
I was gonna, is there any, like, I guess, is there anything that we can do as a, as a community to, like, try to actually be active in pursuing the master plan? Or is it more or less just as things, are we a passive body that just waits till things come in and then we just make sure it abides by our master plan? Are we doing anything to be offensive about, or get proactive about?
You, yes, the, planning commissions definitely can take a more proactive role in their master plan. It doesn't have to be the first of the year, but you could set a time during the year when it's good for you to review the action plan and set some priorities. You could do a joint meeting with the township board and discuss priorities and what projects you'd like to tackle. That, it may take involvement with other entities like the village or Macomb County. So trying to set some priorities, maybe just like the top three things that you wanna accomplish.
Like, we just have a broadband, you know, and wifi, so you could set up to see, you know, to actively search for grants or something like that for pushing out to get them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Just try to really determine what.
Right, what is the most priority to start with, whatever, based on what the board says and anything else?
And then you could even put that on your agenda, under Planning Commission project, so that you are holding yourself accountable to check in for that item. Maybe, maybe it's Blake's. And the road.
Some of the things like amending the zoning orders promote preservation of natural features, working with the village of Armada on the joint recreation plan. I mean, these are all things that we should be working on throughout the year.
We can set up some schedule and work on each one.
Yeah, we, we have to, we need to get an update from the village to see, weren't they?
They, they turned it down.
They turned down the, the joint?
They never, never responded to me.
Okay.
And obviously, that dates.
See, we already took care of one, year two.
Yeah, so check one.
I'm going to the village meeting on Monday.
Uh, what's that?
I'm going to the village meeting on Monday.
Oh, good.
So I'm in, because I'm in the village, so.
What do we want, we wanted to ask them about the rec proposal?
Already, they said if we don't respond by a letterhead, you know, that's your answer kind of thing. Oh, gotcha.
The timeframe's passed.
Six months?
So we wanna work with them as a, on a joint recreational.
That was the, that was the reason why I went there.
Okay.
Part of. But I'm sure, yes, if you can revisit it, by all means.
If you keep putting it under their nose, they might respond.
Yeah, rec, recreation plans are due to the state if you wanna have them eligible for grant funding by February first of every year. So that's your deadline. So you, you need at least six months, really, to, to meet their process that they lay out.
Yeah.
So you still have time.
Right.
If you wanted to try to do something in the next two months and get that started with them. Thank you.
And, and how long are recreation plans typically good for?
Oh, five years.
Five years, I thought, so we're, we're at nineteen, yeah, so.
So when we revise it, we could revise it together potentially, and then apply for grants.
Theoretically, yeah.
Because they, they like that when you work together to get any money.
So that's.
That'd be a good.
That was the whole, yeah, that was the whole reason.
Okay, so, I mean, we're, ours is, we've gotta start working on ours next, and so there's, I don't know where theirs is. What, what, what is theirs? Theirs is older, isn't it?
I wanna say, yes, I, they didn't have, well, there again, I didn't get a response if they were entertaining the revisit. I don't remember, recall the date of when theirs was.
I think it's very old.
I think it's super old.
I think it's actually in here.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty old, yeah.
At least five more years than ours.
So we'd have to, we'd have to get them a, an offer they couldn't refuse, like a package deal.
Were you all at work?
Yeah, you're more than welcome to take it, Maureen.
No, I need your help, Joe.
It is. It's, it's substantially.
Okay.
But they had no, well, let me rephrase that. The man who was the director was out of town at the time. And they're, you know, they didn't respond without his consent, so, and till the state. Mike, exactly. He was more than willing to work with me and, but obviously, it's, he's one of many votes.
Well, I, I think that we should give it one more shot.
Sure.
Just because if we're working on ours, I think if we.
Multiple shots.
I believe that I saw.
It's not going away, so, yeah.
I believe I saw something today that they are looking for someone to fill the planning commission chair's role because the girl that was there is now moving into another position.
Really?
Well, they can elect from their members, right?
They can, they can select from their members and then replace that member with a new position, or, yeah.
Okay, and the planning commission, it's nominated by the board.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the master plan? Okay, Laura, we don't usually adopt things by resolution, so you have the, a resolution here.
You must.
So, so we don't use a motion, we just.
Don't we use a motion to adopt a resolution?
That's what I want to get the exact language.
What date does the village planning commission meet? Thursday?
So is, is it a motion to adopt the resolution, or?
I moved to adopt the twenty twenty-four, the Armada Township twenty twenty-four master plan by resolution.
I'll make that motion. How's that?
Do you make a motion or a resolution?
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Beth and Maureen. Okay, so discussion on this, we are, the motion is to. Let me get this first. Beth and Maureen. So the motion is to adopt the, what's his exact language, Laura?
I moved to adopt the Armada Township twenty twenty-four master plan by resolution.
Twenty twenty-four master plan by resolution. And we don't have to reference this resolution, so I understood that this is the resolution that we're adopting the master plan with?
Yes.
Should it be read?
Into the record, yeah.
Well, this will be attached, right?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be part of the plan, so you're okay.
Okay. Is there any other, any questions on the motion to adopt the master plan by resolution?
Is there another way to adopt it? No, just by resolution, it seems like, hey, there's a.
Need a roll call or just?
You should do roll call, yeah.
Okay, Abercrombie?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Finn?
Yes.
Jabaro?
Yes.
Carrot?
Yes.
And Putchy?
Yes.
That sounds pretty unanimous. That's at least, that's at least four point six people, so I think that's motion passed.
Eighteen months worth of work, so, yeah.
Okay, so.
Yay!
Ta-da.
Congratulations.
Yay!
Yes, thank you, Laura.
Thank you, guys.
Put all those notes away now, right?
Thank you, everyone, for a lot of, a lot of months of, of hard work. I think we've got a good master plan to show for that, so. So that takes care of master plan. So Laura, we just, we just have some work that we're starting on our zoning ordinance. I don't know if you wanted to stick around or did I just sneak out or?
I'm hoping to sneak out. And start your vacation.
Go see fireworks.
Oh, yeah, let her go.
We'd like to see them too.
But I don't think we're gonna spend much time on this stuff.
Good night, Laura.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your, for all your hard work.
Thank you for working with us.
This is a do, right?
This, this is the plan now. Well, if the.
As far as Laura's involvement because of the contract.
Right. McKenna was contracted to do the master plan, and so unfortunately.
You'll be working with Caitlin?
Yeah, that's not that unfortunate. Unfortunately, probably won't be seeing you anymore.
No, I mean, they, from now on, yeah.
Yeah, because the master plan will be done and we'll be working on the ordinance with the, wait, sure.
Yeah, her contract's satisfied.
So, so you want me to just go back in and take these in and the date and all that?
Yeah, however.
Okay, so.
Does it need somebody's signature?
So this is a result of a request. We're going through the Miller that we wanted to revisit the special land uses for the overlay district as well as the agribusiness. And so this is the first draft, and it kinda goes through and shows the ordinance as written and changes that are being proposed. So we're not gonna make any decisions. If there's anything that we wanted, any feedback we wanted to provide to Caitlin, we could do that. Otherwise, we will do a deep dive on this next month. Any have any, any comments or?
I had a couple, I mean, just who forgot. Got number two and the time.
Two, is this on the agribusiness?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two E D?
Small-scale entertainment?
Small-scale entertainment.
Yeah.
I think we should discuss the. Let's see, no longer than three consecutive hours or for more than three hours in any given, given four-hour period.
That, okay, so that is language that is being added.
Yep, that one, I mean, it's just food, food for thought, I mean, is three hours kind of just really limiting, I mean, where did we come up with three hours and not have it be four hours, or?
I think we had gone through that, uh, when we looked at the, uh, definition of small scale entertainment, because we had just recently made some tweaks to that.
But then, if you look at the, the page ten. The definitions.
Well, that's, that's, that's in the definition, that's, I'm not sure why she's moving that out of the definitions and.
Take care of it.
And take care, have a good four.
Yeah.
So it's definitely being pulled out of the, out of the definition, so maybe she felt that it needed to be right there in the ordinance rather than paging back to the definition, um.
Yes, that's her goal on anything, if there are requirements in a definition, they need to be moved into the ordinance, and she's going to be doing that across the board on everything.
Not have to.
Okay, so that was.
Okay, so no jumping around?
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, do, are we gonna dive into this now?
Nope.
We're not, okay.
Okay, then.
Because I get it.
I mean, if you had def- if you had definite feed, we are definitely gonna dive into it next month.
Okay, I'm good with that.
But if you had, if you had anything that you wanted to get fed to Caitlin before next month, I mean, that's.
And that was the, kind of the goal of her providing this today, was so that you guys could chew it over and talk about it here, and feedback any, you know, if, if there's anything that concerns you about what you're seeing, anything that you, you, a- any additional changes that you think need to be added.
Yeah, we need.
She's looking for feedback.
Well, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, another thing that I just food for thought, um, on the outdoor events, do we want to just keep all the outdoor events on just fifty acres, or do we want to make a list, like, to have, if you have forty acres, you, you, you know, you're not gonna have the free range of fifty, but you could do this, this, and this, just a thought, if we want to do something like that at thirty acres.
Break, break down the events.
Yeah, break it down, and, you know.
Right.
Because you hate to, I hate to just totally eliminate somebody from doing an outdoor event, but I understand, there's, because it's limits.
But isn't that under the small scale entertainment?
I, I think that's where I, I, I think the agribusiness picks up.
But, but that's, that's what she's asking for feedback on, do you want, do you want to change the outdoor events, do you want to combine the, I, I mean, her, her letter kind of explains it, um.
Where do you see that?
Minimum sites, minimum site requirements?
No, those are set there.
No, 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 her letter, the, the letter with the wait trim, okay, and she, so, small, small scale entertainment, this requires twenty mi- twenty acre minimum, and would not allow for permanent seating areas, keep in mind, this would not allow benches, so these, these are the things she's pointing out.
Right, right.
Do we need to tweak this in the ordinances, okay, um.
But isn't that just for, you have to have fifty acres to have outdoor events, right now, isn't that what it is?
Right now, that's the way it is.
Okay, and I guess I was.
Except for this small scale entertainment, which we've been.
Twinked.
I guess that's what I'm confused about, small scale entertainment, and wh- what would be the difference?
That's what you're, that's what you're trying to define in changing these ordinances.
Yeah, we, we have the, we have the two different sets, and the one is the, is the agribusiness, which is available to everybody, and then there's the special land uses, which are only allowed in the overlay.
Right, right.
Um, the thing I saw that, and that's what maybe one thing is under, under agribusiness, which is available to anyone in the township.
Right.
Um, she added event bar, so, I think that's the one we got to decide, we've always kind of used that one under our, kind of our, um, accessory uses that are similar, but we've never actually had it stated in the ordinance, so that's completely new direction, so that's, I think, the one thing we really want to think about if we want to have that under agribusiness, because that's, that's kind of a biggie to me.
It's kind of an agri tourism business, I think it's appropriate for our township because of the basis of our, um, economy here.
I think if it's in there, it's gonna need to have a few stipulations, you know, like the minimum acreage or something, but maybe, maybe not.
So, and, and also.
Would they have to come in and get site plan approval and everything anyway, so we can look at each one.
Yeah.
Remember to look at your map.
Yeah.
How many big parcels?
Of the si- the parcel sizes, and do you want to put something in to any of these that says you can only use this if you're on a paved street? Or that kind of thing, um, the, so, so, in looking at her letter, going back to Beth's, um, outdoor events, your minimum site requirements for special outdoor events is still set at fifty acres, do you want to take that down to twenty acres, is one of her questions. Um, setbacks, um, I, I know that, that she mentioned in a couple of different places that the setbacks for, the, the year, rear yard setbacks were actually smaller than what was required by the or- by, by the ordinance for the district. So is that something that you would want to fix or clarify when you're doing the ordinances?
And that was one thing I have a problem with too, that I needed her interpretation of what she wrote, because, and, you know, we'll probably have to wait until next month to see what she, you know, I, I know that if she changed it, or, I don't know if she's proposing that change.
She's not gonna tell you what to do, she's pointing out, these are, these are the things that I see that are in conflict.
Yeah, right, proposing a change. Well.
She's not gonna tell you what to do.
No.
Right, I didn't mean it that way, she's proposing it.
No recommendation.
Yeah, she's proposing this recommendation, but I wanted her translation of what she wrote here, because some of it, it's.
So, so what, what, what specifically are you talking about?
Oh, there's multiple ones, for, it's setbacks, for one, the, um, the, for under, uh, uh, events and ho- housing, hosting facilities, there's a couple of them I marked. So I, I wanted her to explain what, where she got it from, too.
These are coming right out of our current ordinance block.
Well, she's.
Unless it's red.
Unless it's red.
Okay, I didn't know that part of it, all right.
So, a- at this point, next month, if we don't have a site plan, we're gonna have a, a meeting that we can really.
Yes, but my guess is we're gonna have a site plan.
Okay, now, the other thing is, we're gonna, it'd probably be a site plan involving this.
Yes.
So, we'll get direct feedback from people that are trying to use this ordinance, so that's, that's, it's a good thing, just like when we brought in, um, you know.
I mean, I know, I know one of, one of Miller's issues is going to be that he doesn't have a hundred feet between his, the area he's gonna be using for events and his next door neighbor.
Right, so I just, and I, and again, I just want, I get a thought in my head is that it's, obviously, we're reviewing the ordinances because of a situation that has come up, and so I hate to get stuck on a certain issue, and so many of these situations are gonna be so drastically different, if we try to overregulate the ordinances just because we happen to be dealing with one situation, we have to treat it on a case by case basis, because the ordinance may be great for this situation, but then we're fighting it again in the next one, I just hate to overregulate and then.
But that's why she has written this up for you guys to go through item by item, and say, forget about Miller.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And forget about Blake's.
We did it for Blake.
Yep.
This is.
If it were brand new.
Brand new, we are looking at this for any farm that is trying to survive.
To be more general, that's what we're saying, we want to be general, and, and apply, because we can't, we don't want to change the ordinance for everybody that comes in here, now we're changing, that's not even, um, hold up.
Are we? General, yes.
Yep.
Exactly. Exactly. But you, but you can't look at them as a whole, i- i- you know, you can't just take all this and say, okay, we're gonna accept everything she just said, you need to go item by item, okay, so she's looking at, um, agribusiness, recommend modifications of the intent to remove cer- certain sentences, um, remove specifics about site plan review out of the ordinance, because those things should be in the site plan, um, but then, you know, I, a- and I, I'm.
Yeah, it makes for a.
I'm, I'm one of the newest ones here too, so, I, I'm just saying, you, 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 you've got to look at what she's written, and look at the ten pager for each of the items she's pointing out on her letter, and say, okay, does this make sense, is she having me remove something that we really feel needs to belong, still needs to be there? Or, you know what, it does make sense to put the site plan specifics in site plan reviews, why are they in the ordinance? So.
And that leads me back to what I was saying, you know, we need her to, to decipher this, because.
It's all right here.
I, I'm not disputing that, but what she has typed here is five one twenty, literally in the se- in the rear setbacks, so I was, i- it's just gonna have her, you know, we need her here, plain and simple, the, if it was a typo here, because unless that's a dollar sign, what she meant to hit, I don't know what it is.
Uh, what, what, what page are you talking about?
I'm on.
Page three.
Well, three is, yes, and.
It's a hundred and twenty from, from fifty.
Correct, and we, we, we did.
So the zero is there no matter what, the five is stricken out, her suggestion is add.
Hundred, a hundred and twenty.
To twelve, which makes it.
But we made it, yeah, so that, we made it fifty because we thought that was aggressive at one twenty, I remember that specifically, that's why it stuck out in my head.
There's not many one twenty arses in it.
The curtsies don't do that, we'll, we'll discuss that.
Yeah, we'll wait until she gets here, and th- this way she can guide us.
Why, why she proposed that?
But, well, I see why, but we did it intentionally because we thought it was aggressive, I remember that for whatever reason.
But, I'm, I'm still questioning why we need to just table this until next month, other than that everybody wants to go home.
Oh, no.
She needs, she needs guidance.
Ready to go through it.
To know what she should be bringing next month.
What's, do this, make notes and?
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's.
That, that's, that's mine.
I have no problem with that.
Um, so, so looking at page one, are you okay with everything she's having removed from page one?
Which, the point she makes about this, the site plan makes sense, it doesn't need to be in, in the ordinance, and then she's got a couple of sentences struck in the intent.
A- and again, because tho- those things are, are obvious, they're, they're general rules.
Okay, so she struck the long-term preservation farming operations listed as one of the township residents' main objectives within a survey released by Michigan State University, November twenty oh two.
It doesn't really matter, it doesn't need to be in the.
Right.
Right.
I mean, it's.
Okay.
I was fine until three.
A- and then, so, so the, um, if any question arises, that's in the general rules of the zoning ordinance, we don't need to say it again here.
Correct.
Okay.
And she removed the, all the bullets under ancillary uses and proposed new ones.
She took out all, this is all the site plans, the following usage shall be deemed accepted, these uses shall require a site plan.
Oh, well, they don't require a site plan.
Okay, so, that, that is true until you get to A, the third row up from the bottom, she's actually stricken a- agricultural products grown on site. So I'm not sure why that's being stricken, because.
And then fifty percent of our, our size, well, it's addressed twice in the next, um, statement, bakeries, um, cider mills and wineries, it's addressed with each specific.
Well, I, I think the important thing is that she struck out the fact that these uses should require a site plan.
Right, but, but then, letter A, agricultural project, products grown on site, including but not limited to.
Farm.
Farm markets, U-Pic farms, greenhouses, and nur- nurseries.
Those are allowed uses, that's why she probably struck it, because they're not ancillary.
Okay, what page are you guys on?
We're still on page one.
We're still on page one at the bottom.
So we want to talk about that next week with her, why she struck it next month, or?
So, so.
Do we agree with it?
So you're saying that's an allowed use, it doesn't have to be called out as an ancillary use, is that your?
That's what my thinking is, but my question is, is striking out that these uses require a site plan, because I, don't some of these uses require a site plan?
Greenhouses.
Or do all of them require a site plan?
Any commercial.
We only said when general public was allowed internal access to a building, and for paving.
Okay, so, that one is not okay?
I, I think that.
That one, you want to talk more?
You can, you can strike out where required site plan shall include, but I think even there, I thought we did, kind of, we kind of were a little more lenient than the typical, um, site plan requirements.
But should that be moved into the site plan requirements, um, where, where it's just kind of a subsection in site plan requirements, instead of within the or- the ordinance?
So it's in the site plan requirements, not, it doesn't need to be in the agricultural preservation district, because it's where for all site plans.
Right. But, but what DJ's saying is that these are, these are more lenient?
These are more lenient. More lenient than the, the engineer carried the seal and signature of an architect, I think the intent here was that, for the farms, we were gonna allow scale drawings and aerial views, this is more lenient than the site plan review that's in the, the ordinance. So I question taking all of this out.
Okay.
Okay.
My thought is that this was, this is a more lenient requirement than the, the, the one that, you know, the, the general site plans that require the sealed engineered, you know, professional drawings, and the farm ones, we were not holding to that high of a standard, so.
Right, so you're saying somebody could come in with a nice detailed sketch drawing on a paper, it's to scale with referencing photos, and we could approve it based on?
Doesn't have to be.
This one just says a scale drawing, or an aerial image, it doesn't say anything about a sealed architect, signature, you know.
Which, again, is one of the rea- one of the things that Miller kept asking about, I'm a farm, why do I have to get a sealed site plan?
And I think he was told because the public just.
He's inviting, yes.
Inviting the public, and for safety reasons, I believe that's what he was told, I'm not saying, you know, yes, it, yes, it should be, no, it shouldn't be, I'm just saying, I think that was the answer he was given.
Right, okay.
But, but he's also not doing agribusiness, he's doing special land uses in the overlay district.
Right, but he, he only did that because of what he was told he had to for the, yeah, right, I mean, because he would have not done any of that if it wouldn't have been told.
But the.
He needed that SAA overlay.
Yeah, but he's still inviting the public, so that's what.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying, maybe we did, that's, that's the line in the sand, if, if the public, general public is allowed to enter the property and.
Correct.
Not the property, but the, because you could have a pumpkin patch, you know, that they come into, but if they're going into a.
Yeah. Into a building.
Facility or a building.
That's what it says here, just crossed out, basic floor plans are required of publicly accessible building, drawn to scale, this is what DJ was saying.
Right, this.
So we might not want to cross all these out, that's what we're saying.
So, okay, so the, this needs discussion.
I don't think, I don't think we do.
So discussion, to, next one.
All right.
We have to, so the decision for us to make is, do we want to have a lesser standard for these farm operations versus a full-blown site plan?
Yeah, because the, um, I'm, sorry, I think yes, there's already farm tours and stuff in the area, and it's something that we can encourage with agri tourism and agribusiness, it's a big part of our economy in this township.
So we're kind of leaning the, towards not striking all that.
Big, for.
Yeah, the other thing I, I don't, I still don't know that I would put a limit on, like, the, and I guess I, I understand why, but like, the, the fifty percent grown, you know, on site or by the operator.
I agree.
So many, so many of the farms, I mean, my, my parents have literally every single morning my entire life bought from Blake's, bought from Burrell's, bought from every other local farmer, because they all have a specialty. So you, I mean, what makes the market so great is you have all these little specialties from around the community, and if we're making them grow fifty percent of it, it's just not, I don't think it's realistic in my eyes.
I, but, but remember that, that she clarified that gams. I, but, but remember that, that she clarified that GAMS was modified to say locally grown.
I think we can also say that, fifty percent locally grown.
Locally grown.
Yeah, I like that, that, that makes perfect sense, yeah, absolutely.
Or not to, maybe even exchange, it's like, you own your blueberries, I can have my apples, and then we'll have a business.
It definitely needs a lineup of GAMS.
Yeah, no, I mean, that makes perfect sense, yeah.
Or farm market GAMS.
So add that.
And GAMS, they, change, made that change?
Or local. Farm purchase, that's what I have in mind.
So, okay, so we think we're gonna tweak some of this.
Yeah.
Grown by operator.
Or local.
Yeah.
Farmer.
So are we gonna keep that, I mean, we're not gonna say just in the township then? What, what is, what is our local?
And, and what is local, yeah, so you're gonna have to.
Yeah, or is our local?
I thought about that, but sometimes farms have partners that are even out of the county that they exchange with, so I don't think we should limit them, like southeast Michigan, local.
Yeah, I, we, my parents go to the Amish three times a week, and they buy our produce, and he brings stuff back that, I mean, it's, it's all the time.
You know.
Could be Michigan.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I mean, what's in southeast Michigan makes sense.
So, so southeast, but, okay, now we're getting into Christmas trees.
So we wanna open it up some.
Well, then.
The Christmas trees are not southeast, they're, they're up north.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, it can make it, you can make it Michigan and still be.
So.
Yeah.
Make it Michigan?
Yeah, I mean, that, that would just eliminate a bunch of headaches down the road when.
Local Michigan farmers.
Mm-hmm.
Because they all have the same rules.
I don't think you should, maybe we should eliminate the local and just say Michigan farmers.
Yeah, Michigan farmer sounds good.
Because local is.
We're expanding.
So, so anywhere.
Ohio sweet corn shows up a lot for her.
Anywhere in this ten pages.
Ohio. We'll have to smuggle that in.
Where it's, anywhere, anywhere in this ten pages where it says fifty percent grown by the operator, make it Michigan firms? Or no?
I think so.
You said that, you said GAMS already accepted it?
I think we did.
I don't see it here on there.
That they define local?
They don't even have it period unless this isn't updated.
GAMS is, there's not a lot.
There's not GAMS, just Michigan.
I don't know if I have GAMS with me.
In the bakeries, I mean, they could be using eggs from someone else.
Mm-hmm.
Even the five guidelines doesn't show it.
Do a bakery, it's a lot of work.
Okay, I will need to bring those. The ga- there's GAMS for quite a few, farm market covers most of what we're looking at.
Right, right. It might not have been, as Chris stated, it might not be updated.
Apples can be brought in.
They, they update them every year, so they're, they're pretty current.
So I, I guess that's the question, would we rather have our local farmers struggle because they are forced to, you know, or would we rather have, see them make profit even if they're selling a Washington apple or Ohio sweet corn or? Because they're, I mean, our, that.
I don't believe they sell Washington apples.
I'm, I'm just, well, I mean.
Just saying, right, you.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
If that's, if that's all they can get, if, you know, if there's something happens to a Michigan apple crop.
That for an emergency situation.
Okay, so do we wanna go through this, um, cider mills and wineries? Produce grown primarily on site. Minimum of fifty percent grown by the operator. So would we want that changed?
Yeah, I would, I would think it's the same thing.
Or Michigan firms.
I think it's cider mill or winery is kind of a different thing.
That's why I'm asking.
It's kinda like, you go to that orchard or that, you know, that place where they grow and it's part of, so I don't know, that one.
Wait, and I don't, I don't disagree, but I do think like you have, you know, and obviously this is down, like you have like the eight cider mill, that they're still doing all of those things and they don't grow their own apples anymore, you know, you have, it's going to continue to where.
Right.
But it, but it's, yeah, they're not growing it there, but it is like a cider mill.
I mean, even, even Miller's, I mean, they do, they're, all those new things they just got out there, the place looks fantastic, and they don't grow their own apples yet, but you hit the limit on them to, because they could make fantastic cider, you know.
Can't be a specialty in everything.
Yeah, exactly, right.
They need these, they have their own, each has their own niche and then they have to exchange.
So, so.
And then.
Taking out produce grown primarily on site?
Yeah.
And just saying, um, Michigan firms?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that way it's consistent across that too.
So, you know, we, we probably wanna strike the primarily on site.
Mm-hmm.
Same at the bakeries, primarily on site. This kitchen facility, this one.
So I guess my, like, you have bakeries selling baked goods containing, like, is that not fall into this, you know, kitchen facilities if they have a, if they have a bakery, are not held to a standard of. A commercial bakery, I mean, if they're selling items that are prepared in a kitchen in a bakery, they are already, we can almost take that completely out, correct? I mean, would that were falling in like cider mills, wineries, you know, bakeries? Would be derived from produce grown primarily on site, I mean, that, that's coming out, but I guess like line A and B. Could that not, not all fall into, you know, this kitchen facilities along with sale of cider donuts, fruit, you could add baked goods, you know, wine?
The baked goods made on s- the bakery means they're making it there, right?
Right, but I guess what I'm saying, like, you could almost eliminate A and B and then just add it into this H word, you know, the ki- kitchen facilities or?
And so. Or with Michigan food.
Because if we're not really gonna, I mean, I guess you're gonna, we're talking about just regulating, we'd like them to get the majority of their. Their produce and whatnot from the state of Michigan, if that's what A and B are primarily for, is that's just talking about where they're purchasing the, the raw goods from?
I kinda like the kitchen being separate from like a cider mill, because to me that seemed like totally different entities, but.
Yeah. A kitchen, is that like a, so that would be like accits, I guess, what, what, what is a kitchen, what is considered a kitchen?
You make com- a commercial kitchen, make products for sale.
To the public.
To the public.
Well, this is one of our concerns, there's no clear definition between a kitchen facility versus a restaurant.
Right, and I'm, that's what I'm saying, a bakery, if we're saying bakery is selling baked goods, can we have a bakery, just, can you, can I just start a bakery? In, on like ten acres and sell blueberry muffins?
And you're limited to only selling them eight months of the year.
Well, this bacon, the bakery doesn't have that stipulation, if you were making blueberry muffins on your farm and selling them, um, you know, say you're growing blueberries, it looks like you could do that year-round. Because it's separate from the kitchen facility, that's why the kitchen I think needs to be separate, because that's got that eight months out of the year, and then there needs to be a definition between that and the restaurant, because they're.
Accits doesn't operate only eight months a year.
No, they do not, they have, they are, what are they, they're rezoned commercial.
Okay.
So they're not operating under this agribusiness anymore.
Under the agribusiness, okay.
And, okay, now what about the event barn, do you feel that that should have some, uh, minimum acreages a- attached to that or?
I think it was ten, right, ten acres it says?
Okay, well, it's down below, it says, um.
A hundred.
Uh, on a minimum of ten acres.
Hundred acres. Ah, it's.
Farms and orchards with a minimum of land acreage, so all of these above are a minimum of ten acres.
Mm-hmm.
And we have certain ones that have twenty acre minimums.
Which ones?
The, uh, small-scale entertainment.
Oh, no.
The family-oriented bar, eh, fun houses, which is another kind of small-scale entertainment.
Okay.
Maybe, I think it's just those two.
Okay.
But where, where's the ten acres?
At the minimum set requirement, three, all that yellow at the bottom of page two.
Under A.
Under three. Three A.
Ah, got it, okay. All right.
It does have the minimum setback of one hundred feet.
Yeah, I saw that.
If it's not in a enclosed permanent structure.
Any properly run.
And then this, so this C is a new requir- this is some new language.
Yeah, I'm not too, I'm kinda shy on that, the planning commission may mo- modify. And then based on the facts and it's just kinda, I'm afraid it's gonna end up being like a pick and choose and somebody's gonna feel discriminated and get a lawsuit.
What, that's, that's what we have in, that's what we have in L, we have the successor uses similar to those listed above as approved by the planning commission, now this looks like it's more of the same.
I think it's good to have, uh.
Did you say an L?
Something that's not specified.
Yeah, L above that, it's, it's just white, that, that used to be the N, you know, that is the one where, well, we approved, um, the event barn for the wedding.
Yeah.
It wasn't listed, but we said it was a similar use to those listed above.
And the outdoor events for. Um, Miller.
So that L has been kind of a catch-all for things that we don't have listed in the order. Gives us the ability to look at them case by case and see what they're proposing. And you can, uh, and then they become a special land use, so then you can put conditions and make sure that the general welfare of the township is protected. So.
So, so on the event barn, did you say you want that on a twenty acre or, or ten acre?
What was my, um, trillion?
Trillions, ten acres.
It's only ten acres.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, I, I think ten would be fine.
Yeah, we could say a ten.
Well, if it's ten, we don't have to say anything because it's down below.
Yeah, that's why it doesn't.
Yeah.
It's only if we wanna go over ten. Do you think it needs?
Now, that opens up.
Mm-hmm.
Frontier.
Well, so what?
That opens up frontier.
They're ten acres?
They're fifteen acres.
Fifteen.
That they own.
Mm-hmm.
So.
If you put it in here, then it becomes an acceptable use and the, I mean, I kinda like the fact that before it was as, as a special land use.
Then who did it so place?
Yeah, it's frontier, frontier farmer.
Frontier markets.
And I'm not saying I don't want them, them to succeed, I'm just pointing out.
No, no, no. Yeah.
Well, when you look here. Blue, every color that's not orange is over ten acres. So the only orange parcels are the ones that are split off from the, the houses.
Mm-hmm.
Everything else in the township is ten acres or more.
Okay, so.
So, that means that could have a lot of event barns.
Are there any? Do you want to put a restriction that it can't happen on a dirt road?
Well, that spot, yeah, you can't.
It says we have to be approved by the McComb County, it's in there.
Is there a, um, like a population density map?
The transportation.
Right here, oh, population density?
Not here.
No, this is just acreage.
No, I don't, you can assume the orange parcels are your dense, yeah, it's all houses.
Aren't gonna be, right.
They're all single homes.
I, I.
Most of them.
I personally have issues with the event barn, because like, see, when you look at this map and it's like, anybody can buy a parcel and that's got a barn on it.
Yeah.
And this is an accepted use, it's not a special land use.
That's why. I would leave it like it is.
Yeah, it's a special land use.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yes.
So event barns are special land use only.
The way we've been doing is under, under L where we can do it as a special land use.
Yeah.
This way there's.
Okay, so K goes under L.
Or get, we, I'd rather have her input, she's not here.
Well, we, she's not gonna tell you, not gonna.
I know, but she can, she can still give us, uh, questions of that we don't know.
But I still think, a- again, it, it doesn't prevent them from getting it done, it's just.
Sure.
It goes through, uh, we get to make a decision based on.
I'm gonna more, more screw me and more introduce this out.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
But other communities that she serves, she can give input from there, so. I think that's why she's so, uh, an asset here.
Okay, well, we're, we're diving into this deeper than I thought, but.
It's fine.
Getting our questions ready for next one.
And then she does have some definitions I think are important, either. And to me, to me, the tricky one is always the ancillary use, I mean, we always talk about ancillary use, and some of the uses that people propose are like, this is the main thing, this is not, this is not ancillary.
Yes.
So.
Okay.
Okay, she's added ancillary use.
I'm even, yeah, I guess.
Under.
Banquet hall.
D two, it says township board should make the determination as to whether an event hosting a facility is truly ancillary to the site's agriculture use, or use, that's what you just talked about.
Right.
What are you reading from?
Page four, under D.
Gotcha.
Two.
Township board makes the determination if the event hosting facility is truly ancillary to the site's agricultural use, which, if you just bought a ten acre parcel and with had a barn on it, you turn it into a hall. You could not make that, you could not meet that requirement, because it's, if that's, would be the entire thing, it's just a rental hall basically.
Church.
But, you know, in order to even get there, they'd have to, uh, be, uh, zoned for the overlay district and then, because this is under, event hosting facility is under the overlay district. So technically, they probably wouldn't get rezoned to overlay district if it wasn't a farm. That's the way you would hopefully weed out truly commercial operations coming in, trying to slide in as a farm operation.
Right, but by making them come in and actually provide, you know, like, go through the special, or special land use, that's what would enable us to kinda weed them out, because we'd be able to see that operation more.
Yeah, and, and these, these articles, the sixteen, you know, the event hosting, the special outdoor events, this manufactured food and beverages and the, uh, year-round kitchen, those are, those four are only allowed in that SAA district. So the first step is, they have to get past that, they have to be rezoned into that SAA overlay district. So these are really on, these are only available in two parcels in the, in the township. So hopefully, is that you wouldn't get someone coming in as a purely commercial operation, their first step would be to get past the SAA district. Uh, if they can't be rezoned for that, then they don't have these options.
And I'm just playing the other side, why, I guess why is that, if they came in and buy, bought an abandoned hip roof barn and renovated it and made it pretty enough to have, have events held there and have people want to pay to have pictures taken there, why would that be a bad thing for the township?
Because, because they're not a farm, they would come in as a commercial banquet hall and go, they'd get rezoned to commercial and they'd have to go that route.
Okay, so, and.
So they don't fall under SAA.
It wouldn't go under SAA, but at that time, we would obviously say, well, this would be a, that'd be a commercial use.
They'd have to rezone.
Yeah, and that's a fire.
You'd have to rezone.
But that's a good way to like capture it.
You'd have to be rezoned and it would be, it would be difficult, there'd be a spot rezoning if it was in the middle of a residential area, I mean. You know, it should be a natural progression following the master plan, it would be around the village or on thirty-two mile, or it wouldn't be like right in the agricultural neighborhood.
I guess that's the hard thing about an event, if you wanted to do a historical, y- your, your pretty historical barns are not on thirty, you know, like they're.
Right.
They aren't naturally in that woodsy area or big field area that are, are pretty, so it's just hard to.
And these ordinances are designed to help preserve existing farms more so than.
Right, right, right.
You're geared for somebody to come in and.
Right.
Revive a farm.
And I, obviously, we've had farms are approaching us now, we've had never had that commercial use come in, obviously, it's been more farms that are trying to generate additional revenue, but.
Well, isn't it also to control where the growth is, it's not just to preserve that?
So it's safe for the roads and the.
It's, it's because, you know. You know, you want it in a certain area, for instance, in the corridor on thirty-two or Powell, what have you, whatever you designate, it's not just to preserve the farming.
It's, well, it's to protect the residents, I mean, you can't have.
It's booked.
Commercial, you can't have commercial operations being put right in the middle strictly residential areas, it's.
Oh, yeah, there's multiple examples of that. I mean, that's, I, I know what you're saying, but.
It happens.
You know, it happens the more than you think, um, that's all I'm saying, I'm not trying to be a contrarian or, uh, so I just. That's my uneducated opinion.
Without, without approval, it happens, I mean.
Things happen. Okay, so, um. Basically understand where she's coming from, we just, but we need to dive into this with her.
Yeah, yeah.
This is, this is mainly to get our thoughts together and, you know, her letter, you, you gotta really look at this with her letter and see what her thoughts are, and she's gonna, she's gonna give us, okay, if you do this, you do that, and then we have to decide what's the best path for the, for the township. So that's where, we got a month to think about that, and most likely, if we have a site plan, that'll be on the agenda first. and then this will be um under PC projects towards the end of the agenda. Okay.
Sixty feet.
So one thing she was asking that caught my attention was, what is the difference between um ancillary use and? What, what?
Accessory.
Accessory, yeah, ancillary and accessory.
All right, well, she's got those highlighted, accessory use.
Yeah.
The use that is clearly incidental to customarily found a connection with and generally located on the same lot, that's one of our definitions right now.
Yeah, ancillary supports the larger operation.
Ancillary.
What'd you say?
Ancillary uses usually support a larger operation, if you need that to do what you're doing in the first place.
I don't think these are both in our definition.
They are, that's, that's why she called it out. Um, and she, her, her notes say, these terms highlighted in yellow are very similar and the definition for ancillary is most commonly used for accessory uses, consider consolidating the terms or clarifying how they are different.
I think that you have an ancillary kitchen to support what you're doing on the, whatever, on the farm, on the, in the hospital, wherever.
Well, she's suggesting there to use, she's suggesting there to use adjunct food service.
I'm sorry.
Because it's eight months of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so adjunct food service is eight months of the year, but ancillary would be something that would consistently support. Is that what we're thinking? I think of hospitals, hospitals have more than just clinical areas taking care of patients, they also have to have food, they have to have facilities department, they have they have all these other departments that are ancillary and supporting the hospital campus.
Okay, so accessory and ancillary are very similar.
Yeah. I usually use accessory. Accessories are just, make it look better.
So we have to decide which one, which one is a better fit, but you have to look at the ordinance is how, how they're used, that she would have to go through and find all the places where they're used and make sure they're consistent.
Where those words are used?
Yeah.
Chris, excuse me, where did you see that in her notes?
The, on the ancillary?
Yes, please.
Um, so in her, in her letter, it's on um page three.
Yeah.
Third from the bottom. And then in, in the, the ten pager, it's page eight and nine.
Okay. Thank you. Gotcha.
Very similar.
For traffic studies, for traffic, I don't know. That's leaving.
Totally where I'm right passing. Okay. I agree with that.
Okay.
That needs, that is a tweak.
I think we should take out accessory and use ancillary personally.
What did she say, she says um. She said, definition, it's most commonly used for accessory uses.
I don't like the way they say here on two, on the first page, acceptable ancillary uses, because ancillary, like I was describing, they're required for operation for a lot of, so you, so you have to accept it, you can't just say, oh, you can't have a kitchen because. So those terms together seem um like an oxymoron, accept, acceptable ancillary, we do.
Well, according to our definition, that's just a, something that's customarily incidental to the principal use.
And, and that's exactly what a- accessory says as well, located on the same lot as the principal use.
I agree that those definitions are pretty much the same.
Found in connection with.
Mm-hmm.
We should see what Webster says.
Okay, but, but there, what she's saying is there may be a more common uh planning.
A planning term?
Yeah, that, to lean one way or the other.
Yeah. Like adjunct kitchen, that's, that's weird, non-permanent.
So, I think we're, we're. I think we're in agreement that that needs, then we just need the direction of which is the best route to go.
So you're saying like ancillary could be, you know, additional or uh subuses or something like that of your name, is what you're.
They're, support the main use, ancillary thing, support a main use, that's what the word usually means and uh, I think that's what the word really means.
Yeah, support, supported uses or something like that, yeah.
I think we need our dictionary.
Yeah, when you look it up, like you can't do the main use without the ancillary ones.
Just look it up on your phone.
Yeah.
Um, okay, well, we definitely, it's something that needs to be addressed, but um, okay, anything else in here? I think there was another question about the uh sixteen forty-one on page seven, about the um manufacturing of food and this is just allowed on the uh wine cider microbrewery, I think that's, or the, and the year-round kitchen was, the first requirement was a winery cider mill microbrewer distillery may offer a food service. But I think that these, maybe, maybe they're just titled wrong, but I think that the way these things were written were very specific for those types of operations.
For the farm, farm operations?
Yeah, this, the year-round kitchen with the seating area and tasting room, I think, was geared just towards a microbrewer distillery where they wanna offer a food service, which is a good thing to have with uh, especially when you have alcoholic beverages. And it was geared just that way, but when you look at, when you read the title, it says year-round kitchen, and it's like, oh, I want a year-round kitchen. It's really, it's really meant to be a kind of a tasting room to go with the, the beverage production.
Stop, thank you.
Because they might need some tweaks in the titles and.
Yeah, I guess.
Some word changes.
And the, the manufactured food and beverages, it, it doesn't really talk much about food, it just goes right into beverages. It's pretty much all about beverages, so another, you know, kind of misleading title.
Page seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, and on, on her letter, it's page three, she kind of explains what she's thinking.
Her letter, page three.
To quickly go back to ancillary versus accessory.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ancillary definition is of secondary importance, comma subordinate auxiliary or accessory
Accessory.
is definition number two, so they're basically the same word. Subservient or subordinate like a.
Handmade.
Auxiliary.
Yeah.
So.
I was just reading that too.
What is planning language used, that's what DJ said, what word do they prefer?
There's a medical term.
In state legislation, things like that.
I think accessory is used, um, like, I think she said, I know we have for accessory building, it's a new word used differently.
Ancillary is an old word.
Okay, well.
Make a laundry facility for a hospital, you don't have that.
It's roughly the same, it's just designed for different fields.
But. Well, let's, here's something totally new, what, how, how do we feel about this definition for the adjunct food service? I think we do need some better definitions of the food service.
Yeah, because you can only do it eight months a year, according to this um SAA, so I think that adjunct is appropriate because that means it's not full-time.
And we're talking about prepackaged or catered, basically.
Yeah.
Well, it says lunch, prepackaged or pre-arranged dinner is provided on the premises, so to me, that sounds like somebody bringing something in, or, or maybe not pre-arranged, no, it's not.
Adjunct. Are you talking about year-round kitchens or?
I'm looking at page eight, this brand, new de- definition that she added for the food service.
Eight.
It's on page three of her letter.
Add, she wants add, adjunct food services. Yeah, the confusion between kitchen facilities versus restaurant, she proposed adding this term adjunct food service.
Because when, when it's in a restaurant, you're preparing it raw, when you're packaged, you can sell it anywhere, basically,
Right. Prepackaged.
is what they're saying, because you, you need a food handlers and that falls under a restaurant. That's why she's saying this, is the way I'm taking it.
A full kitchen could be used for catered events, but again, it's based on outside food being brought in. Allow a person to run out this as a commercial kitchen space, for example, a home occupation factory that wants some more room for a specific order request. Uh, there's a lot of ways it could go at this.
There is.
And then on this next page over, adjunct food services shall not include the operations of uh standard open front takeout or drive-through restaurant.
That's open front.
I thought that was we walk into the counter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's means a lot different than a drive-through.
Right, that's why she pointed it out, drive-through, or drive-through, I say.
So not include though, it's. So what does it include? How do you serve your food? Open front. Right. Yeah, yeah, get out of the car, so that's.
What's that?
So you have to get out of the car and go in? Well. But then you said it's an open front at a counter, so which one is it? And then can we take it home in a bag?
I can see a definition of open front.
Cario.
Well, that doesn't include, takeouts prohibited, so how do we define it better? That's very confusing.
Right, shall not include, I'm saying.
I mean, takeout. What does it include? Why? Takeout, I mean, this lady's got donuts, what, you gotta sit there and eat your donuts, you can't take them out?
Yeah, I know.
I mean, takeout, you can't order and take some home?
I don't think that drive, drive-through applies with the other ones, but.
I didn't write it.
Well.
I guess we need to understand what standard open front takeout, what, what.
Right, you don't understand what open front is.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I, I could understand adjunct, adjunct food service shall not include the operation of a drive-through restaurant.
I can understand that too.
I can understand that, but the, the other ones, I mean, if Miller wants to sell his, his donuts at his counter and they wanna take it out front and eat it, or sit inside and eat it, it shouldn't matter.
Right, I think it limited everything, except for a sit-down restaurant. Or take some donuts home.
Right.
And then, so it's a sit-down restaurant for.
I'm, I would say maybe it's to take off the premises, maybe?
She didn't define adjunct as partially not full-time either, I thought that's what, that's what it means, the word. Not eight months of the year.
Well, hence, we don't have her here.
It's just difficult to, and this entire, entire thing is, you know, agribusiness, added farming, but like the farm operations within
adjunct professors, that's where it's.
The township. It's just so out, it's so out there that it's, I mean, I could say, what, what about the dairy farm that wants to have a drive-through for their ice cream? I mean, they would no longer, they couldn't do that, you know, they, they couldn't do that then.
Why not?
But, yeah, they could, because it would be a commercial.
But they should be able to, I think they should be, it's too prohibitive.
They said they can't have a drive-through.
Yeah, but that would be more of a commercial application.
They're bringing their specialty.
Right, but how could it not be, I mean, they, that, they're looking at, you know what, we can start making ice cream, is it a value-added operation to our, our, us as a dairy operation?
But it's not full-time.
They wouldn't fall under this as a dairy farm? You'd make them go commercial if they're selling their ice cream? I, I just question, I, I don't know.
No, no.
Yeah, it's too prohibitive.
Well, this adjunct, it's, it's a thing added to something else as a supplementary, supplementary rather than an essential part.
That doesn't make sense.
So it's like, it's not the, the food service is not the essential part, it's just something that's supplementary to the business. Once again, it's like ancillary, it's just like a.
So it's another term for accessory ancillary, but none of them are the perfect term.
Yes, it's added as a supplementary, not to, that's the definition.
It's important, same thing.
It's exact same thing.
I think it's used, like they're bringing a specialty, like an adjunct professor, adjunct professor, that's how I think of it, is used in conversation. They bring their specialty and they're not a full-time tenured professor, but they're really smart on one thing, so they come and they teach for, you know, however many classes we schedule, but then they leave.
Yeah, when you put in similar words, you get accessories, supplement, addition, companion.
But synonyms aren't the same as definitions.
Add-on, companion. Okay, well, we got a lot of words that all mean the same thing in here. Okay. It's not like a, we've got enough questions in our mind and I think that we have to kind of take, go through and come up some ideas.
Take an eye or. Homework.
Whether it's just going through the dictionary or.
Well, like Joe said, we wanna know what other communities are using, so we have standard language in the, in the planning zone and in the regulatory zone, what language is um for common definition?
Are we, what other, what other townships have a agribusiness district?
Which word?
I mean, we can't be the first.
There's quite, quite a few, we, actually, we were one of the ones that really started.
It's a ton, huh?
I wonder if Dan Buren Township has that.
Front edge of this thing years ago, but now they're getting more common, um.
Well, even that, it's like, we'll, we'll critique it to our fitting, whether they have their verbiage their way, but
I'm thinking of them up.
we can always modify it to what we want.
Right.
Or what we think is the best.
Yeah, right, and I just, even looking at like what's in the township, I mean, for, for a portion of it, like, a lot of it was developed for, you know, Blakes and Billers and
Mm-hmm.
and Frontier, but how many other orchards are even left in the county, I don't, or in the township, I don't know that there are any operational orchards in the township.
No, but there's other townships with similar character, and like you're saying, like Bruce Township has similar character, Washington Township's really populated at this point, I don't even think they have it.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
There's other, other wineries and young brothers, yeah.
Right, right.
Bruce. And then, around the fringe of the area, there's like Van Buren Township, if you go down that way, similar character, so we can see what they're doing.
Right, right. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
We might just have to do some more homework digging up other uh ordinance to see how creative other townships were coming, working around that.
Richmond doesn't really have orchards, like you're saying. Maybe if we look on the west side of the state, there's definitely agricultural.
Right, and I guess that's what I'm getting, like, this, the purpose of this is to make.
There's five.
The possibility of those.
You got it?
Businesses continue to come to township, right, this isn't to like regulate, over-regulate them, we want them, right?
Yeah.
From the township standpoint, I would think.
We, it's part of the character of our native township, so yeah, we're encouraged.
There's five of them in our area.
What ones?
You want every one? Lesview, um, Blakes, uh, one I didn't, I've never, I.
Oh, orchards.
Yep, hides on thirty, thirty-three or thirty-six mile road or something like that.
Where are they at? Big Red, Stony Creek, and a bunch surrounding.
Right.
Yeah, those.
Those are all.
So there's, there's seven hundred and seventy-five in the state, there's, what did I read?
None of those are around here.
Uh, seven seventy-five in the state, something over three hundred and forty thousand square acres in just the south half Michigan. So do the math.
Okay, um, so.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
So section sixteen forty, it says special outdoor events.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, and, and it's.
Hang on, hang on.
That's on page five.
Page five?
Mm-hmm. And it's the fifty acres, so why is it called special outdoor events? Do we have regular outdoor events?
Yeah, they say we have a regular outdoor event.
These were special, these were, Blakes has seven of them, they're allowed seven, and they're, they're like, they're having their fast, their beer, there's like a special.
Their wrap and their. Cider days.
Yeah.
Put tents up.
Should, should that be an agro, agro, agro whatever, outdoor event instead of special?
So, well.
Should it be specific for this SAA or the, the agribusiness?
It's in this section, isn't it?
Specific?
Well, these are, I mean, these are spe- these are special events, even if something that, oh, I'm just gonna have a, a trunk or treat, or it's, it's, it's more of a, it's an event.
Okay, so what, what is a trunk or treat?
Wait, wait, wait.
Or, or if somebody decides they wanna do like a little flea market or, you know, a one-time flea market or rummage sale or have a fire.
Those are the small scale, yeah.
That's an agribusiness.
Those are, yeah, those are allowed.
Those are, those are allowed then in any of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or car show, car shows.
Yeah, I remember that.
Those are allowed.
It's on a consistent basis, I think it's.
But when you put up tents and stuff, I don't know.
Don't quote me.
What makes it special?
No, there's not, there's not a definition to it, so.
Why didn't we put that like that?
That's the question, what makes it special, because Blake says seven.
I don't remember that.
Oh, uh, it also states.
No, no, no.
Oh, uh, it also states outdoor events limited to no more than three pe- three per week that extend after seven P M.
Per week.
So does that mean that you can have, as long as they don't extend past seven P M, they can have them all week? Cause it says three after seven, right?
Yeah.
According to that record.
I think you just have to come up with a, a general, like instead of special, maybe do a large outdoor event, cause that's something you're gonna limit because of the volume and capacity that's gonna be coming at one time.
That's on page six, so that's what.
They're no longer than seventy two hours?
Yeah, but this was made for like events and hosting facilities.
No, this is just events, this is.
Outdoor events shall be limited to no more than three per week that extend after seven P M.
So, so if you read requirement number one, it's saying that you can do Sunday through Thursday, eight to seven, and Friday, Saturday, and national holidays from eight to eleven. So what that's, that second one is saying, if you wanted to do Thursday, Friday, Saturday, you could do that, but you can't do Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Or Thursday through Sunday.
But.
You can only do three that extend after seven P M.
At the two to eleven on the weekend.
But you can do as many as you want, so long as they are not.
It's not consecutive.
Stop at seven.
They stop at seven.
Right, three consecutive days after seven o'clock is.
Okay.
That's the way I read it anyway.
Okay, I needed, I needed some little clarification on how somebody else interpreted it.
A lot of detail. A lot of detail, for people to remember when they're functioning as a business, and they're gonna say, oh, everybody go home, it's, you know, seven fifteen, I mean.
I, I think the biggest question is, what is a special outdoor event, it's not defined. No, that's when that's the confusion that we have.
Concerts, cause they're now doing concerts over there, I'm sure you can hear them.
I can hear it, Blakes.
Concerts?
I mean, that, that would be a special outdoor event.
With Saturdays, they have a band.
Well, that, yeah, that.
Right.
A bigger concert than a small little music person in the, in the, um, bar area.
You can, you can hear that, right.
I mean, how can we define what the special events are?
The township board.
They, they need to come to the township.
Amplified sound is, is.
Yeah, it says the township board shall limit the duration and density of the event as appropriate, uh, to ensure the ca- capability or compatibility with the surrounding areas of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think it needs a definition.
It's like a, a, if there's a, in their daily operation, there should be an average amount of people who were, would, were to visit, you know, on a daily basis. And then if it is a certain amount over that average, and you have, you're on a daily, they have fifty customers come in, if for that special event, they double and they have a hundred or, or triple the size of it. Then it would be considered a special event, because it's over the average that they normally consume, or something like that.
That's a good definition.
DJ, isn't there already a definition in, in the back?
There's some type of definition.
Yeah.
Or it, it, it could be, it could be right in here.
Like a, a special.
But what I'm saying is, in, in the current book, there.
There's nothing in the definitions.
I thought there was.
No, I just like special outdoor events.
Special outdoor event would be considered if, you know, it is, is this percent over the average traffic volume of any given venue or something like that.
Well, you're talking about Blakes, and Blakes is under a overlay district, this is, this is in general.
Right, I'm saying, if, if whoever, I mean, there's a.
Yeah, but what, what Joe was saying, it.
That's what's confusing, I think we need to.
It's just easy to.
Address the rules for an overlay district separate from rules from.
Yes. Everything else.
Everything else, I think that's, this is, this is confusing.
Yeah.
And I'd like, I'd like to see a definition for special outdoor events.
Yes, I would too.
Joe Kucci is saying is that if, if, if it increases your normal daily traffic by a certain amount.
It's pretty true.
But a certain percentage, then it should be considered.
Then it's obviously a special event, and it's not your normal everyday thing.
Well, who's to say what a normal everyday thing is?
Well, I mean, there's general traffic, I mean, you're.
Gams.
Well, then the, yeah, gams, I mean, we have to have something, because.
Five minute or more backup on the road.
But that doesn't fall under them.
And then the occupant, there's occupancy requirements that would define anything above that, for fire code.
Yeah.
That would be.
But it, it should, it should have some kind of a definition, you know, it's not, not, we're not clear for reading this, what it is.
Yeah, it's a finding.
Right, maybe we're missing something.
This is good discussion, pre discussion.
It's all Chris's fault.
Pre discussion, pre discussion.
Well, I think we're gonna, yeah, Chris is the one that pushed us.
She makes us work, she's like that.
Trying to get up.
We're here.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
I think, yeah, I think there's.
You can leave soon, we can still catch the fireworks.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that is true.
We discussed, is that adequate, Chris?
Not my meeting, I'm not running it.
I'm going back, I'm going back to my screen to see there are no, there's no public online, and I can see the public, so, um, as far as this, we've, we've kinda hashed this out a little bit, we're gonna have to do it with Caitlin, so.
What else is on the agenda?
Nobody here.
Thank you.
Table. Yeah.
Uh, just see, do we need a motion?
Close, close the discussion, we didn't open the discussion.
Wait, she's, she's got, she's showing on her last page that she's got a definition for small, small scale entertainment, oh, I'm sorry.
Not special.
Not special. Outdoor, I'm sorry, I'll leave you alone.
Don't pick on my Cayman.
Okay, so we don't make a motion to table this till, uh, next month?
Never.
Okay, Steve said yes, table till next month, I'll second that. Discussion to table this till next month when we have the, with Caitlin the planner, let's see, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, the motion carries, we have no PC projects and no public online or in-house, so it is eight forty one, if anyone would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn at eight forty one.
Steve?
I'll second that.
Okay, Maureen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, have a happy fourth, everyone.